Test. Test.
Thank you for watching this video. If you enjoyed it, please give it a like and subscribe to our channel.
It's a great day in Kershaw County after a long weekend and happy birthday Ben Conell. And I think I'm getting tired of the joke about 2:22, 22 and Tuesday. But I got a grandkid and I have to listen to it about every time I talk to her. Spring sports have started, wrestling is moving into championships. Camden girls basketball team is on fire and headed to state. We just had a great retreat at county council. Thank you to the staff. Very spirited about how do you have prosperity? And how do you preserve and protect what you love? About the sustained quality of this great county, the great place in our schools, communities and services that we provide. So we'll have a number of items on that and we'll move ahead. And with that, I turn to Mr. Tucker for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Let us bow our heads and open our hearts, please. Lord, Father God Almighty, we come to you as humbly as we know how this evening, asking for your grace and your mercy and your protection. We thank you now, Lord. We thank you for life, health and strength. We thank you for every heart and mind and body that's on this dais up here this afternoon. We thank you for all that any county employees do and all the citizens pour into this county. Now, Lord Father, as we are days away from entering into another war, we ask that you touch the hearts of those who are seeking to do destruction, to watch over them and give them the understanding that war is not always the answer. And if it's unable, if we're unable to go, not to go to war, we ask that you bless the men and women who protects our freedoms and liberties so we can do the things back here in the United States that we so much deserve and so much enjoy to do. Now, Lord Father, bless all of us. Give us traveling mercy to our various destinations. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mrs. Higgrass is stuck in traffic, should be here in about 15 minutes. And Mary, we'll update the attendance when he gets in. We move now to public comments. Mr. DeBose, what's the lineup? How many do we have signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have eight people signed up and the limit's 30 minutes. So each one would have less than, a little less, less than five minutes, four minutes each about.
Okay, I think that's going to be eight times four is 32. Let's make it three and a half minutes or so.
Three and a half minutes.
I will just tell everybody we're welcoming your comments. The rules here are that we allow you to speak, but there are no question and answering back. We have on this sheet there what your contact is and we'll be quick to reach out to you after this meeting, should the need arise. I would ask you to be economical with your schedule, your comments, so that everybody has time to make their points and that we receive them up here. Keep your comments on target and please be respectful of the body that we're trying to convene here. Mr. DeBose, bring them up. Let's go.
The first person to sign up is Brian, Brian Holmes.
It's Holmes.
Thank you. Thank you, council for having me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Burns, and thank DNR for coming out here and showing interest in what I've got to say in council. I'm here tonight to talk about Lake Waterie and Lake Waterie's fishing. The economic impact of Lake Waterie and the trend. I am an avid person who fishes there. I have lived there all my life and we have watched the steady decline of Lake Waterie's fishing and natural resources go down in our eyes. I have fish tournaments since 1997 out there and the size and the quality have dropped off. I know 2020 was a rough year. Everybody was off and everybody was putting a lot of pressure on the fish. But as a citizen, I've been looking at other great heroic stories from Lake Chickamaqua, Chickamaqua in Tennessee where they introduced a new strain of bass, which has brought all the major fishing leagues there, which brought major economic impact to the area. I've watched county after county bring in business, bring in revenue certain ways and I'm really looking to council to listen up and kind of take heed that our natural resources, our lakes, our fisheries can bring in just as much growth with the right people. Bring in your retirement people into the community. With that, you have taxpayers, you have businesses that come in and follow the motels. A lot of different things revolve around our economic system. Lakes, streams are all perfect tools to use. Van Branch and myself have kind of gotten a little group together and we're trying to really work on getting our lake brought back to historic level and to draw the revenue we need back into our state. Chickamaqua at one time 10 years ago was a nothing lake. Now they are number five on the Bassmaster Trail. Their economic growth from motels and revenue, people renting homes coming in on the weekends and staying the weekends has been astronomical. So where, like I say, where we, where we spend all this time working on bringing business in? Let's bring the right people in. Let's bring, let's bring taxpayers in to generate revenue just as well as business. I mean, we want people to come here and stay. We want the fishery to sustain and have everything great for our kids and the future generations of their kids. If you take a kid fishing and you go out and you don't catch much, you lose his interest and he's gone. So I'm just asking council and DNR to kind of look and see if we can put more money into our natural resources to bring the right people here and generate some economic revenue. I mean, there's, there's wonders to be done out there with Waterie.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. DeBose.
Thank you, Brian.
The second person signed up is Matthew Hutchison.
Hutchison.
Mr. Hutchison. Good evening. Please forgive me. My printer broke at home, so I have to read off my phone now. My name is Matthew Hutchison. I'm the host of the Vote Map Podcast and the type of guy who reads all the council meeting agendas from front to back. One item on tonight's agenda that immediately grabbed my attention is a proposal put forth by our council chairman for the ad hoc task force to address, in quotes, "every goal in Vision 2030 broadly, with a specific focus on quality schools, communities and county services. Along with recognizing the issues involved in a growing community such as ours, this task force will be charged with finding, quote, "alternative approaches to how to fund by federal, state and county and grant tax fees, policies and ordinances of all these sources and examine in detail impact, road and other fees and incentives." All of this is politicians speak for how we are going to raise the taxes on the citizens of Kershaw County without actually calling it a tax increase or avoid putting it on a ballot for the people to decide for themselves. Whether you call it a fee, a millage, or the county gets a grant from the state or federal governments, it all comes from the same point of origin, the citizen's pocket. How can you be making such schemes to tax us any more than you already are while giving tax breaks and incentives to multimillion dollar businesses? How much roadwork could be done with that money? Vision 2030 is a globalist pipe dream copied from the pages of the UN's Agenda 2030 and watered down for consumption at the county level. I encourage everyone, councilmen and citizens, to read both documents to see how they compare. The politicians of this county are picking winners and losers with the decisions they make behind closed doors. They use secret project names and only reveal what has been decided once it's too late for the citizens to raise concerns. I'm 100% sure that if the citizens of this county were to take a few minutes to ask themselves how much Vision 2030 would cost the citizens, they'd be filling up this room beyond capacity. Vision 2030 would damage this county beyond repair if it were anything more than the pipe dream I mentioned earlier. It seems to be used by its visionary as a club, or better yet, a gavel, to beat the back, to beat back any argument against his agenda. The remaining council members, with the exception of one, sit on their hands and do nothing but play follow the leader. I cannot sit idly by and let something like this go unchallenged. I refuse to play nice with people who want to turn our beautiful rural county into an extension of Northeast Columbia's section of Two Notch Road. I will continue to employ the citizens of Kershaw County to get more involved with the dealings of this county council. I ask the citizens to hold your elected officials accountable and to never tire in doing so. To the members of this council, I say, please think about what you are doing to our wonderful county when you invite outside industries with open arms while turning your backs on the taxpayers and small business owners. Please answer your phones, speak to your constituents, and for God's sake, please end the executive sessions and backroom deals. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeBose.
The third person to sign up is Mark Root.
What was his last name, please?
R-O-O-T-E.
Okay, thank you.
Before I introduce myself, I have a few things to say. Keep in mind that these are all rhetorical questions. According to the public comment guidelines for Kershaw County Council meetings, this is not a time for questions and answers from the council. When and how exactly are we supposed to make our concerns and the council's opinion public knowledge? If you're not supposed to respond to us here, how are the citizens, your employers, supposed to know what you're thinking about what's on our mind? It also says in plain English on that same public comment guideline sheet that the Kershaw County Council will be guided by the values of honesty, transparency, courageous leadership, civility, respect and understanding of issues. How exactly are you being transparent when you go to executive session whenever something that might upset the constituents comes up? What are you talking about that the citizens, your employers, are not authorized to listen to? Is it more big government backroom deals and threats against those who disagree with certain other people that have been involved in government for way too long already? In my apparently uneducated opinion, unless an issue being discussed is directly related to a private citizen and they do not wish their private business to become public knowledge, there is nothing the council has the authority to do that I am aware of that we, the citizens of Kershaw County, should not hear as it's being discussed. Now, my introduction. My name is Mark Root. I moved here from Pennsylvania in 2015. I lived in Wyoming County up there and in 2020, it had a population of 26,069 over 397 square miles, compared to the population of Kershaw County at 65,403 over 727 square miles. Kershaw County already had a higher population density than Wyoming County when I moved here in 2015. My problem with Wyoming County was not the rural life. I love my space and my privacy. My problem was the excessive taxation without representation and rulings being enforced on us by the state and city populations of Philadelphia, Pittsburgh and Harrisburg. Now that I'm here in Kershaw County, paying attention to my money and liberty because I'm self-employed engineering consultant, the big government junk that you're forcing us to swallow without any inputs, any input from the residents that actually live out in the county, not just here in the metropolis of Camden, is too much. I chose Kershaw County specifically because I liked what I read about the area. 90%, of my work is done remotely and I have to travel for the other 10%. This means I could have relocated to anywhere in the country. But I chose Kershaw County because it was primarily rural with a relatively small government. I was apparently wrong. I'm starting to look at moving away by the time 2030 rolls around. I'll have found somewhere else to move myself and my business, definitely before I hire anyone to help me here. I won't bring anyone to this county to work when I know they'll be overburdened with ridiculous taxes and fees just to live here. You know, like how people that live out in the county that have well water and septic systems are being forced to pay for the sewer system in Camden, Lugoff and Elgin through taxation. If someone wants to live somewhere with the municipal sewer system, they should be responsible for paying for it. I don't pay for vacations I'm not going on. Why am I being forced to pay for someone else's literal shit?
Young man, we ask you to keep your language straight, please. Thank you.
That wasn't a curse. That was a literal word with a definition meaning what it meant.
Thank you. That's rules here.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order. I think he has a right to express himself. Whether I agree with his language or not, he has the right to express himself.
Thank you, sir. Would you please continue?
Now, let me get back on topic. I want to talk about this ad hoc task force on growth for Vision Kershaw 2030. Who's on the task force? You've identified Dr. Robbins and Mr. Carpenter, but who else? You're going to add other people as determined by the co-chairs. Who are these others? I know for a fact that Shane would never allow me specifically on this committee because when my wife was part of the parent representative, when my wife was the parent representative to the school board for Midway Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year, he had the nerve to actually tell her to shush during a meeting when she was identifying all the laws, both state and federal, that he was violating with his late start Wednesday policy. He's yet to show his face in Midway Elementary School, as far as I'm aware. And that discussion was two years ago, right before I came here to talk to y'all about it in March 2020 because the school board had been ignoring my wife. He has a very serious dislike of my wife because she had the guts to disagree with him on the record. I've never spoken to him myself, but I'm willing to bet money he remembers my last name from his interactions with my wife. Someday he'll realize that my wife is a whole lot nicer than I am. Shane Robbins should be run out of Kershaw County. Oh, wait, he doesn't live here. He lives in Myrtle Beach. How's that work? The Kershaw County School District Superintendent lives in Horry County, about two hours away. Why would he need to be close enough to visit the schools he's actually in charge of?
Sir, can you wrap it up, please?
Get in there.
No, I'm going to ask you to finish up pretty quick.
If you stop and interrupt me, I will be finished. Back to my issue tonight. Are there any citizens that will not directly benefit from this Vision 2030 plan going to be involved with any part of this ad hoc committee? I'm willing to bet the only people surveyed in those thousands of surveys are people with money and influence in Camden and their friends in the rest of the county. I certainly wasn't asked for my opinion. I didn't know about this vision until I started looking into the big government projects I noticed happening around Kershaw County. Y'all gave a large corporation five years tax-free, but screw the little people, you know, the small business owners? In closing, I demand as a citizen of Kershaw County, you stop hiding your deals in executive session and stop making decisions for the county that only benefit you and your friends. You need to abide by what the little people, you know, citizens outside Camden want and need. Stop making deals like selling your family properties to the city or county to line your own pockets. Stop. Keep Kershaw rural, where people that want that rural like, community life can live. If you want big government, move yourself to someplace that already has it. We don't want it. Stop trying to ruin our way of life with your globalist socialist agenda. We're Americans. It is our right to live freely.
Thank you so very much, sir. Mr. DeBose, please.
Next person to sign up is Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb.
Today is Washington's birthday, not yesterday. I think it's sad that we're relegating our first president to just another president and not celebrating on February the 22nd. The birthday of the father of our country, and I guess you could say the father of the free world. Things would have been so different if it had never been a Washington.
Talking to Mike. I can't hear you, Tom.
I'm sorry. Well, I'll start over then. Today is Washington's birthday, not yesterday. So we have been sort of fudging and relegating our first president to just another president. And I don't think it's appropriate. He is the father of our country and I guess you could say the father of the free world. He struggled to give us this greatest country on earth of constitutional government and law blending with people power. But there have always been enemies, both foreign and domestic. And Benedict Arnold comes to mind. He served with Washington during the revolution. Did very well for a while, but because of some selfish personal reasons, I guess, he decided to turn coat and join the British. So he was found out, but he got away, lived out his life in England, a traitor. And I think that now, it's kind of ironic that the city that was named for Washington, Washington, the District of Columbia, is crawling with clones of Benedict Arnold now.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBose.
The next person to sign up is Debbie Smith.
Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing me talk. My name is Debbie Smith. I'm a big soccer proponent in the county of Kershaw. I've been a resident for eight years. I'm a board member of Technical Soccer Club that Kershaw County Rec has had a partnership with for many years. And I just want to go on the record tonight just to make my voice heard. As a parent, I have two boys that play for the club and also three boys that have played in the rec department for the last five or six years. So have had a close relationship with the recreation department. Over the past few weeks, Kershaw County, in my opinion, has made some troubling decisions with regards to soccer in our county. Technical Soccer Club has been a club in the county for 20 years. Our Board of Directors head has been a resident of Elgin for 20 years and he has been the Lugoff Lugoff Elgin teacher and coach for the last 20 years also. So, we have really firm roots in the county, and it came as a complete surprise to us as a club a couple of weeks ago that Kershaw County Rec had decided, without informing us ahead of time, that they were going to switch gears and go with a different club, a club that, in my opinion, does not know Kershaw County, does not know Kershaw County kids. And it just troubles me that we were blindsided completely after fulfilling our partnership at Kershaw County over the last five years, that they, without informing us, would decide, without consulting us and giving us any feedback, that they were going to go with South Carolina United. Over the past couple of weeks, we have got back into talks with Kershaw County, but I'm just really troubled. The rec department has decided to go with a bigger entity club when technical soccer is here right on their doorsteps. Like I said, we have a 20-year history in Kershaw County, and we know the kids, we know the rec kids, we know, we have so many families from our area that we feel like we're the best club to fulfill this obligation in Kershaw County. So, as a parent and as a board member of Technical Soccer Club, I just want to make y'all aware of what's going on in your rec department. We have had a relationship with them for five years. We've been giving free coaching clinics to all your soccer rec coaches for free. We have supported your rec leagues for the last five years. We are Kershaw County born and raised, a lot of these families, and feel like the way that we've been handled over the last few weeks is just unacceptable, and it just doesn't make sense for Kershaw County soccer. We're a small community of soccer that's up and coming. Like I said, we know the county, we know the kids, and it makes sense for technical soccer to be given the opportunity that they deserve to continue to progress soccer in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I enjoy seeing that young man in the back there. Thank you. Mr. DeBeauz. The next person that signed up is Katie Gwynn. Ms. Gwynn.
Hello, everyone. All right, I have been in touch with several soccer league families in our county, and also after speaking with the director of SC United, I understand that in January, Kershaw County reached out to SC United to discuss the problems with the current program and a partnership. I understand that since then, a decision was made not to pursue that partnership and to present Mr. Alan Riches with Technical Soccer a contract. Mr. Riches has been working hand in hand with Parks and Rec for five years. He is the Lugoff Elgin head soccer coach and an educator of the arts. He has been investing in our youth for 20 years. This is an individual making life-lasting impacts on our children. He is a part of our community. He is one of us. The soccer families that I have talked to have nothing but great things to say about the soccer program, and due to this whole debacle with United, the soccer registration has now been pushed to March 17th. The first soccer game is March 27th. That gives Mr. Riches 10 days to assess the children, build the teams, get the coaches, get the referees, and train them all, all while he's working at Lugoff Elgin High School educating our kids. Per the contract, he will be evaluated at the end of the season on this program. I believe that we are setting Mr. Riches up for failure. To be completely fair, I believe technical soccer deserves a longer contract, considering their contribution to the rec department for five years and the lasting community impact that they've already had. If there is a lack of soccer participation or signups, that is completely out of his hands, and 10 days is not nearly enough time for anyone to build a successful program. We should always set people up for success, build them up, and help them succeed. My second comment relates to number two on tonight's agenda, establishing an ad hoc task force on growth. Gentlemen, we are behind the curve. The citizens of Kershaw County are concerned about the rapid growth. Schools are packed. You can ask any Lugoff Elgin teacher, and you can see it on the roads when you drive through Lugoff and Elgin. My concern is that this new committee only kicks the can further down the road. Council only meets monthly, so any decision that's going to take place to address the growth will take three months. It will take an ad hoc committee months to do whatever you determine they need to do. This just continues to prolong an already serious problem. Our citizens deserve the growth issue to be addressed immediately. The time to forward an ad hoc committee for growth was five years ago. I believe this council has the resources they need to come up with a plan. There is a wealth of knowledge in our community if you listen to the citizens' ideas. Council has legal advice, and you know from your seat what your constituents are asking you for. So, I think it's time to attack the problem from your seats and not create another ad hoc committee that will take more months, more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeBeauz. The next person that signed up, I believe, is Alan Hutto. Mr. Hutto? All right, Mr. Hutto passes. Mr. DeBeauz. The last person that signed up is Rose Patterson. Ms. Patterson.
Good evening.
Kershaw County Council. This is my first time at this, so I won't tell you that I'm totally relaxed, but I'm here for the soccer league as well and also am shocked at the thing, at this being sprung on us so fast. I'm the grandmother of two boys who've just become involved because of our Technical Soccer League Director, and for one, he cares about these kids beyond anything I've ever seen. I have spoken with other parents as well, and even before this ever came above us, about their experiences with United, which were not, in any of those cases, favorable of how their children were overlooked. You know, they're saying he got a contract, but it wasn't a contract. He gets two weeks to get a whole season together after he was sprung upon, blindsided by not our rec department, but finds out he no longer has this position by the director of United through an email. I just don't understand how in the world he could be led to believe, I don't know when they intended on telling him, but when he faced our rec department with asking the question of why, he had no answers. So, they have set him up to fail exactly because there's no way you can get a soccer league ready in two weeks. He asked at the beginning of the season, or before the beginning, if he could, please, know how he could help to get sign up going because Kershaw County had not done any advertising on his part, had not supported him in the past. So, he was going to take it upon himself at his cost to get the advertising out and get everything, you know, to where the parents could read it. I don't think his intention was to up the cost, and now it is up per United by $20, at least for this season. I don't know where they intend to go. But I just feel like it must have been done behind closed doors because no parent, no coach, of course, the league director, nobody had any clue until two weeks ago when our league guy got an email from the other director, which was, you know, at the very least, very insulting. I would question who all of you were consulted. I know the Kershaw County Rec Commission was not consulted. There is even a commission member with children on our league that had no clue this was going to happen. My understanding is he arranged a meeting to get answers as well with the director of the Kershaw County Department, and he had no answers for him. About him having even to set this up by March 17th, what are parents going to think? What kind of signs are we sending out as a rec department when they've already signed up? They've gotten all these emails from this club who just came in with no announcements, and they think they're done. We've already had a huge cry-out on Facebook about who is this, you know, the rates went up or the fees went up. They're already confused, and now they think we're going to go back out there and he's going to advertise again. They're going to be so confused. It's not, I mean, I don't understand how we can even allow this. They're from Richland County area. I want, I mean, who over there is in Kershaw County? They operate like a business where our director is an educator and has been for 20 years in this, in our county. He has the best interest up here, but I just, I don't understand how this decision came down with not known, I believe, to most people. I don't think he should be made to soccer, also to, he was only given with this agreement the opportunity to do the spring league. Well, you can't prove something when you're given two weeks to organize the whole thing, and then they say, okay, did you do it or not? Well, of course, they're setting up to fail. But as a concerned grandparent and citizen, taxpaying, should I say, and these parents are taxpaying in our county, I just want to know where our voice is. And yes, I would like to know, you know, how a decision like this can be made from what I can tell heavily by a very small group of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Mr. DeBeauz. That concludes the sign-up list. Thank you. I do want to take a moment here. Let me pull these out. We had a number of emails that came in before I came in here and given to us by the clerk, and they'll be provided to each of you right after this. We're near the end of our time, but I will summarize it under our record, under our rules. We have seven that came in, and they will be given to each of you for the record.
Could you read them out loud?
And I will read, I will summarize them. They come from Julie Lyons, Aaron Sire, I think I pronounced that correctly, Charlotte Gibson, a young lady named Katie, not further identified, Missy Avila, Mark Moore, and Terry Robinson. They all support year-round soccer. They support the TSC and a league, with a rec league to round out. They have citing the long incompetent service of Mr. Alan Riches and extend the period of performance. I'm going to ask the administrator to discuss some of this during his comments, and I'm going to quote from each of them, and then you guys will see the full comments later to preserve time now that we've gone over time. Charlotte Gibson says, "We decided to put her in travel soccer with TSC, and I watched her grow tremendously in her skills and self-confidence. I would love for TSC to continue to partner with the rec department." Charlotte Gibson. A young lady named Katie, "I'm writing to support TSC. We are a military family and moved to Kershaw County, but the school's over Sumter." She continues, "My youngest is now playing for TSC. They're dedicated and committed to teaching young players, plus TSC is a local soccer program, so let's support our community." And I go on now with Melissa Avila. Let's see. Proud Bulldog. My husband has been a teacher at Montessori for nine years, and I have two high school students, and one in Camden High and one central, north central. Our family is very excited about TSC and the Kershaw County Rec Department working together to grow soccer in this area. The sport has been long disregarded, but is gaining popularity, especially with the USA Women's Soccer winning the World Cup and this year being a World Cup year. She concludes by saying, "Please take into consideration, as you move forward, we're all growing our local small businesses," and this is a great way to show our Kershaw County pride. Mark Moore, "I ask that you consider extending the period of performance for the Technical Soccer Club to allow time for their program to enact effective change in our sporting opportunities. During my time as volunteer coach, I have been, I've seen many issues that can be addressed by having this partnership in place." I move on to Julie Lyons. "I hope that TSC is allowed to continue to run their camps and practices here in Kershaw County. My hope is that one day the county will have designated soccer fields to hold home games and tournaments for the children, to grow their skills and love for soccer." Let's see. And the last one, again, hard copies will be provided to all of you. Terry Robinson, "Coach Allen doesn't see social economic status in his players. He sees players' potential and helps them develop. Many of the players on TSC may not have the monetary means or transportation to play, but this is never a hindrance as TSC parents and Coach Allen network like a family to fill the gap." So, again, with that, that concludes public comments, and we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve? So, move. Now, Mr. Gardner, a second.
Second.
Mr. Tucker, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the agenda, raise your hands. And it's unanimous, Mary. We move now to a series of public presentations. The first one is John Henderson from the Alliance of Counties Risk Management Award. I'm getting used to seeing you, John.
Yeah. As long as we keep Mr. Cato on board.
Who is that coming up with?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, pleasure to be up here again this year. As you know, we have Barry Cato and Todd Schaefer here, and their work in the improvement of your cybersecurity awareness program is what we're recognizing today with an outstanding safety achievement. And just wanted to make a couple of comments. This cyber stuff is scary, and a lot of folks don't quite understand how devastating it can be, and what we've seen in other counties and around the country, I think is bringing it to the forefront, and we want to recognize you for taking those forward steps to make it a stronger program here in Kershaw County. I think there's a number of things that you've done that I'd like to mention. You increased your excess liability insurance for cyber last year, and I know you're working on it again this year. And your insurance brokers did give you a target list of things to work on, and I know that you're working through that list now, but it's not easy to do. But there's a lot that can be done through the education of employees, and a lot of this cyber stuff is keeping employees and other folks from making simple mistakes that can be corrected with some education and training, and y'all have certainly done that. One thing I'd be remiss if I didn't mention is, please continue with your work to include multi-factor authentication in your program. That's a key, and as we're in the renewal season for cyber insurance, I'm hearing a lot of things around the country that risk that do not have multi-factor authentication are not going to be considered as favorably as others. So, please, by all means, keep working on that, and hopefully you can get where you want to go. But let me talk about a few things you've done. The cybersecurity awareness training that's part of the Enhance You Training Program has been a great thing, and this is what we're talking about with the simple things that you can train employees not to do, like don't open that email that you're not quite sure it is. And if they think that Vic Carpenter is asking somebody to buy a bunch of gift cards, forget it. He's not going to ever do that. I even fell for that years ago when that first started going out, and, but, you know, it's a little sophistication and just training to remind people. Another thing that y'all are doing, I think, is great. You contracted with a group called Know Before to do phishing attempts. Y'all know what phishing attempts are. Not your phishing, but--
With a P-A.
I think it's great that y'all are doing that, and once you get one of those and then you get called out for not doing it, and then you have to go through an online class, you'd be a lot less likely to do it again. But these phishing attempts and schemes are so sophisticated that even the experts are falling for it. So, I mean, anything you can do to train people is great. I know you also have two vulnerability scanner programs that are essentially friendly attacks on your system to see if they can get in, and I think that's a great thing, and the fact that y'all contracted with a group for Family Court to go and try to strengthen their systems through this vulnerability attacks is really fantastic. So, that's a great, great idea, and I know you're also working with NACO, and I know that Barry and was it Todd that went through the class? It was a five-day class to simulate cyber attacks, so that was really good. Also, finally, I know that you're working on a recovery plan, and that's a start, and not having it online only, not having it online at all is certainly the way to go because that's where the hackers are going to go to know what you're trying to do, so pulling that out is important. But I think y'all are doing a great job with that, and we commend you for your support. And so, this is the 2001 Outstanding Safety Achievement Award presented to Kershaw County, and many years in a row, y'all keep doing it, and thank y'all for your support.
Come on up. Let's have everybody. Come on up here, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I think Barry's got some family here as well tonight.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you very much. Very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Vic, for pointing that out. Um, with that, we move to the second public presentation, uh, the other kind of fishing. Uh, this was Russell and I met with the DNR people and the law enforcement people and with a number of, uh, fishermen and found we might want to take a review. I want to introduce, uh, Mr. Ross Self who came all the way from Columbia, and it shows you that DNR is really on our side. Thank you, Ross. Good to have you here. And can you introduce, uh, your com- compadre there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the chance to be here tonight to speak to the council about what's going on Lake Watery or what maybe going on Lake Watery. And with me tonight is Lynn Quatra, who's our Assistant Chief of Freshwater Fisheries. She, uh, she, she's in charge of day-to-day operations, and I'm the figurehead, as she can tell, so. I'm the talking head. She's the, uh, she takes care of the day-to-day operations for us, but, um, you know, I guess just from, for point of reference, Watery's always been really important to me. I, I came to South Carolina from Alabama in 1980 as a student intern with the, with back then the Wildlife and Marine Resources Department, and I worked in the area that can, that had Lake Watery in there. And then when I came back from graduate school in 1985 full-time to South Carolina, I worked out of Rock Hill and worked on Lake Watery. So the first, the first several years of my career involved working on Lake Watery, and Watery has gone through, as those of you who've been in there for a long time know, tremendous change over those years. I've got just a couple of slides to show you that, that kind of show you some of the, the fish population parameters we look at with largemouth bass, and I, I'm going to go through those quickly, uh, because the, the science doesn't always tell you everything about these things. There's two, two components to, to managing fisheries in, in public waters, and that's the biology of the animal, how it's, how it's performing, how it's growing, the relative abundance. And then there's the, the, the social component of that. How is that population performing to meet the expectations of the community that rely on it for the recreation and livelihood? So if, I don't know how I do this, the next slide. There we, magically, magically. Um, so this, this is, uh, this, this shows you the, uh, the average total length of largemouth bass. Now, these are fish that are collected with our electrofishing sampling every year, and this, this is a data set that goes back to 1984. And, and those, those lines that go up and down are the, are the, uh, the confidence intervals, they call them, and all those confidence intervals overlap, so there's no statistical difference across this continuum here. Um, and, and generally, you can see kind of a, a moderate increase in the, in the average length of fish in our samples, except for the sample that's taken in 2021 that, that declined. Now, as, for clarification, in the last, oh, 10 or 15 years, uh, we've, we've gone to, we've got so many places to sample across the state and, and relatively small staff, so we, we tend to do rotational samplings. We'll go into a water body and sample it for two or three years in a row, and then we'll take a couple of years off and go sample in another reservoir. So, uh, 2018, 16, 17, 18 was the last three-year sampling interval on, on Watery. 2021 was the first year of another three-year evaluation, and, um, we're anxious to see the 22 data that'll be, be available midsummer to see if, if this, uh, this, this trend in, in a decline in size, uh, continues. Let's, uh, flip on over to the next slide, I think, there. This is, this is a, a slide that indicate, this is the thing called relative weight, and you can think of that as a measure of plumpness. How, how plump is the fish? How, how has it been eating? Is it in good condition? Has it had enough, enough forage to sustain itself? And generally, relative weights above about 90 or 90% there, uh, are considered good. So our, our relative weights in, uh, in largemouth bass in the lake are relatively good. There, again, we see a little downtick in the 21 samples. It's going to be, we're anxious to see the 22 data to see if that was a, just a flyer, an, an aberrant data point, or, or if it's indicating the start of a trend. And if we'll flip over to the next, this is, this is a thing called proportional stock density. This is the relative abundance of specific-sized fish in the system. That top line is, is the abundance of fish greater than 12 inches. That, uh, that middle line there is the abundance of fish greater than 15 inches, and that bottom line is the abundance of fish greater than 20 inches. Um, and, and this is, this is fairly typical for what we see in, in Piedmont reservoirs in South Carolina. Now, if you remember, we had a, we had a little bit of an increase in that first slide in the, in the mean lengths, and then if you look at these last 10 years of data here since about 2012, it looks like the relative abundance of fish above 15 inches has increased. Um, and it probably has because that coincides with the implementation of a 14-inch minimum size limit statewide. So it stands to reason, if you can't take fish less than 14 inches, you're going to see a greater abundance of fish, well, less than 15 inches in, in a system. So that, that's, there's an explanation for that little, that little increase there, and it's, and I think it shows that that, that size limit change did some good at that time. And if you flip over to that last, this is the last slide. This just shows, shows, uh, mortality, the mortality rate of bass in Watery and the average size of fish, uh, at age three, um, compared to the state average. And Watery was still a little, a little bit in better shape as far, mortality rates were lower than it is than the state average, and the average size of an age-three bass is a little larger than the state average. Now, if you just look at these, these population parameters, you think, well, everything's kind of rocking along, you know? It's no, nothing there, nothing too, you get too concerned about as far as those population parameters. But, you know, we hear, we've been hearing from members of the public and, and, and through the, through the contact from the, the council here, you know, we recognize that, that there's, there's not satisfaction with the way the fisheries perform, and it's not satisfaction with the, with what folks are experiencing when they're out fishing. And, um, you know, there was a, a major league fishing tournament there that was held in September and then broadcast some months after that, and, and some unseemly comments were made about their, their success. Now, um, to put that in perspective, September is, is probably the most difficult month of the year to catch bass. So we got to keep that in the back of our mind, but, but clearly, those, the comments of those angles, the comments we're hearing from local folks is that the, the fishery's not performing at the level that, that the community would like to see. And, and as the speaker earlier mentioned, there, there is, there is a tremendous amount of economic value and economic impact associated with quality fishing opportunities. So, um, like, like I mentioned earlier, we, our 2021 was the first year of a three-year sampling period for Lake Watery. That work will continue in '22 and '23. Um, we are, we are becoming, as a, as a management section within the Department of Natural Resources, we're becoming more and more aware and concerned about our, uh, what, what we call black bass populations. And black bass is a generic term that refers to largemouth, smallmouth, red-eye, and spotted bass in South Carolina. So we're, we're, we're becoming increasingly concerned with the way large, black bass populations are performing across the state. Some of that has to do with the expansion of invasives, of a non-native invasive species, the spotted bass that came in from the western part of Georgia. We don't see spots in Watery at this point, but they'll be here eventually, probably. They're in Wiley. So we, we are going to, uh, intensify our evaluation of black bass in the state. Uh, we, we're in the process of trying to establish an agreement with our Marine Resources Center in Charleston through their genetics lab to look, take a close look at the, at the genetic makeup of our largemouth bass populations in our inland reservoirs. Watery is on, will be on that first cut. Uh, we'll start those samples hopefully this spring. We're hoping to get a delivery of, of, uh, sample vials from our folks at, in Charleston this week to, when we distribute those to the field staff to start taking samples for genetic evaluation. Uh, and we're, we're going, we're launching this genetic evaluation, uh, to kind of redo some work that was done 25 years ago, uh, to look, you know, a lot, a lot of you who pay attention to, to recreational fishing, particularly for bats, probably heard about Florida bass. Well, South Carolina's in an integrated zone where we have Florida and northern bass occurring together. So part of our fish in South Carolina are almost purely Floridas, and another part are about 50, 60% northern. We want to reevaluate that, to get, to do a little, a little deeper look at that and see, see what our makeup is, see where we're having problems with, uh, expansion of non-natives, with an eye toward potentially working toward, uh, some, some additional public water stocking for largemouth. You know, we're not ready to say we're going to be stocking Watery in the next 18 months, but we are going to be looking at those parameters that we need to look at to make informed decisions about how to go about, um, stock enhancement of those populations and where those things need to occur first. Um, you know, what, as, as I've watched Watery over the years, uh, it's, it's really been fascinating to me because when I was here in the early eighties, uh, it was before tertiary treatment, it was a lot of, a lot of nutrients coming down out of Charlotte, down the Cataba River, and, uh, and the, the standing stock, uh, of, of fish in Watery, and standing stock, you can think of the number of cows in the pasture. You know, the standing stock of fish in Watery in, back in the early eighties, was almost 1,000 pounds of fish per acre. Uh, they Clean Water Act kicked in, they, they initiated tertiary treatment of wastewater coming out of the, the North Carolina region and, and cleaned the water up, not nearly as many nutrients coming down the system, and we documented the change in standing stock in Watery went from 1,000 pounds of fish per acre down to between 500 and 600 pounds of fish per acre. So, you know, folks that have been watching Watery as long as I have will realize there are not nearly as many fish out there as there used to be, but it's hard to throw stones at clean water. So, um, but we are, we, we, I think, I think the take-home message I want to leave to y'all tonight is, we recognize that, that the, the fishery in Watery is not meeting the expectations and the hopes of the community, and we are, we are anxious to look at that and see if we can find a path forward to make improvements. We recognize the significance of recreational fishing to, to South Carolina and to local communities, and the economic driver that can be for folks, and, uh, we are, we are looking forward to working with y'all toward make, seeing some improvements there to make that fishery as good as it can be.
Thank you for your love of our waterways and our, and our county. It shows. It really does.
Thank you.
Uh, when we, can we expect you to come back with some kind of update? Uh, the summer after the census?
You know, maybe, maybe late, late summer, that'll give us time to, uh, our, our, our federal grant runs through June, the end of June, where, that supports this work. Uh, and, and once we get into July, our folks will, will take time to start compiling all that information. So maybe late summer, early fall, we can come back and kind of give you an update. We should have, hopefully, Lynn and I both have our fingers crossed, we'll start to see some genetics data by then, too.
Yeah, this is Mr. Brazel's district. Russ, you have anything to say there?
Yeah, hey, Mr. Self. Um, enjoyed meeting with you whenever we
Thank you.
Spoke, what, a month or so ago. Um, I'm happy to help in any way. Um, as we talked about, I grew up fishing on the lake and, uh, also have an interest in helping any way I can. The, uh, are you guys going to go do a fish count with the electrode?
Yes, sir. Our staff will be back on Watery this spring, uh,
Okay.
Probably late, mid-March, into April, um, to, to, to do another, another annual assessment of, of largemouth bass, and I, I know that they are, they are looking to get in touch with members of the council, let you know when that's happening.
You still going to take me with you?
They'd be glad to take somebody out, so y'all can see how that work is done.
Yeah, I'd love to see how it's done.
Uh, all right. Thank you. Russell, anything further?
No.
Any other comments?
Thank you so much.
We've got somebody who loves our county and recognizes, uh, the pressure on our population is not just on humans, but also on the waterways, and, uh, if you do this, I want you to fix the quail population, too.
There we go.
Thank you, Russ. I wish you a safe journey. Uh, I want to tell you how special you made us feel today by coming.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, that concludes, uh, public presentations. We move to approval of minutes. It's on page three, tab A, and up on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. Signify your approval, and it's unanimous, Mary. We move now to new business, which is item number one in tab B, page six. It's up on the screen. Uh, tax savings for improved historic properties. Is this for discussion tonight, Ben?
Yes, for discussion and a, a vote to direct staff to bring options back to council.
Okay. You want to make the motion?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we direct legal counsel and staff to propose options within the next three meetings, or council to consider for a vote on Bailey Bill tax relief.
A second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass. Um, Ben, would you want to lead us on discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with the, um, the hotel that was eligible for tax abatement under state law, it raised a lot of questions that I also had as well on how, how can we, if state law governs us at the county level, how can we actually provide, uh, tax abatement or some type of benefit or relief to smaller businesses? And so multiple council members and also people who develop properties that fit within the Bailey Tax Bill said this is an option. Apparently, the county had done a study called the Historic Resources Survey in Kershaw County, October 2001 through May 2002, that identified over 1,000 properties that are outside of the city of Camden that would be eligible for Bailey Bill tax relief. Let me describe briefly what that is. Essentially, if a property is over 50 years old and has a structure on it, you can, uh, the county council could elect to freeze the tax rate on that particular property if there's a certain level of investment that goes into it. Uh, city of Camden has one which is attached in the records. We could mirror that for, uh, properties that were within city of Camden. We could do something different for outside the city of Camden, but there are over 1,000 properties that would qualify outside the city of Camden, and we've had this, this study that, uh, has been on the shelf for some time. So properties 1972 or before roughly could be eligible for a tax rate freeze for five, 10, 15 years at their current rate pre-development. And I like this idea, uh, gentlemen, because on the one side you're looking at, do we have a, a rubbish or public nuisance-type law that you have to try to enforce because it's a wasted property, it's an attractive nuisance for kids to go in, or drugs to be used in? We find needles in these older buildings all the time, or you can incentivize folks to develop it. County council, again, is governed by state law for felos and abatements. Our legal council has explained, explained in the past that usually that threshold is $2 million of investment or a certain number of jobs coming to the county, and then we can consider the, the door open for possible action. This is one that lets you act on properties that are down to, I mean, the value could be a $10,000 piece of property, or it could be a $100,000 piece of property, or more or less. And so I like it because it seems a little bit more equitable, allows us to reach out and, uh, and impact other small businesses in the community that are working on older pieces of property, and that's what I had to share so far. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
I just want to echo a lot of what, uh, Councilman Connel, uh, mentioned, a few, in fact, before, as I was running for, uh, for council, a lot of the discussions that I had was, uh, centered around commercial, ins- ins- incentivizing commercial growth, uh, because I feel like that's what we lack in our county. Um, everyone understands kind of how school funding works and other funding mechanisms. A lot of the commercial side A lot of the commercial side rolls into that. And so one of the ways that we can incentivize commercial growth is through this Bailey Bill, because like Mr. Connel stated, larger projects, they get felos, and again, those are all things that come down from the state, not rules that we make up. And so the question's always been, hey, how about the, how about the little investor? You know, how about the mom and pop? And as I talk, as I talk to folks in Camden and other business owners, they always bring to me the Bailey Bill that a lot of municipalities have, including Camden, and a lot of counties in our state already have. And a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the revitalization that you're seeing even in the city of Camden, a lot of those folks have utilized the Bailey Bill in Camden. And so I think it's, I think it's our due diligence as a county to explore how can we expand that program on a countywide level so that it's not just the two and a half million dollar investments that are able to get breaks, but it's, it's mom and pops who just want to open up a store in the vacant building that's been vacant for 50 years or, or for however long and help them get into that building and then they not have the overhead that comes when you purchase that building, when you fix it up, and then it gets assessed and appraised for higher. So this would allow that business owner to make that investment and then have their tax burden be the same as it was when they acquired that building in its original state, thus giving them a better, a bigger window of opportunity to get some ROI on their, on their business and to grow stronger. So I support this. I've looked at this for many years and I'm thankful that we have other council members that are helping us drive this. I do recognize that we're probably going to run into some staffing issues when we talk about, you know, how do we put the logistics of identifying the properties and approving them properties, I realize, but I think that we at least need to explore this because this is another tool in the toolbox to spur growth, incentivize growth, and give relief to the, to the private market. Mr. DeBose, is this, is this for commercial and residential? Is that correct?
Well, what is eligible can be limited. For instance, the city ordinance, but yes, it can be commercial.
But from the state?
It can be.
From the state, it could be a 50-year-old house or, or commercial. So this could be used, very good.
Although what qualifies can be quantitated in the ordinance.
Good, good. And so anyway, I think it's a worthy discussion. I had, I had a meeting with legal about six, seven weeks ago about, at length about this to try to begin to get this going. So I would appreciate y'all's attention on this as we try to move it forward.
Okay, excellent. Other comments? All right. Yeah, Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I had a very close, close friend of mine call me and he, and he asked me whether I support this. And I said, I will certainly look at it and consider it. And what I'm trying to put, I've been struggling, what I've got in my head is that the county would enact, we would enact the Bailey Bill by ordinance, which would be three readings, correct, Mr. DeBose?
That's correct.
Okay. Historical properties, the assessed value of the property at the value prior to qualified improvements is where they would stay. If they went into a new building, an old building, they would basically, Mr. Carpenter or whichever, whoever, maintain that level of taxation if they spent another $500,000 on the building. It would be tax-free to improvements even if it was up to 100,000, 500,000.
It would be whatever value the council chose to set as the threshold.
How long would this, how long would they get this tax incentive?
Again, that would be the council's determination. I think it's up to 20 years is the maximum that could be done.
The Bailey Bill doesn't give a specific.
No more than 20 years.
No more than 20 years, kind of like a fee and lieu. What worries me, and my colleague over to the right, Pastor did hit on it just a little bit about staffing, you know, staffing issues. Bottom line is we, right now, how do we qualify who is and who isn't? How would we do that, Mr. Carpenter?
Well, a building would have to be identified as a landmark building in some fashion. And so you would essentially have to go and certify, you know, the buildings. I think Mr. Connel was referring to a study done some years ago of the buildings in the county. That would probably have to be updated to reflect 20 years have passed in order to identify those buildings that would qualify at least on paper.
Does, excuse me, does the county at this current time have the staff and resources to do that?
Well, we wouldn't be able to do that in-house, no, sir.
Would not?
No, sir.
How would you get it done?
We'd probably, we'd have to reach out and find somebody to come in and survey all the buildings in the county.
Let me ask you this as the chief employee here at Kershaw County. I know you're going to do what we ask you to do, but what do you think of this?
I'm going to do whatever the council asks me to do, sir.
Mr. DeBose?
I think the administrator quite correctly said that you need to identify as a threshold eligible properties. And identification wouldn't be exclusive, of course, because time keeps going on, but you'd have a beginning point. All the ordinances I've looked at, and I've looked at the city's, the city's ordinance, I've looked at Richland Counties and several other counties, they do have some threshold of identifying what is eligible as a starting point. Otherwise, you have the unenviable position of council having to review every one, and that would be overly burdensome, time-consuming, and in my opinion, not practical.
Mr. DeBose, thank you for that opinion. I agree. This is what concerns me. I would love to be able to support this, but what concerns me is that we don't know how we would even enforce it, put it in place, but yet we've taken first reading tonight. So therefore, in two, no, we're not taking first.
No, no, no.
We're directing the staff to do this.
He's doing exactly what you want.
Okay, okay, good. Well, yeah. I wish we could have done that tonight. I wish we could have done the research and had it here tonight. I don't know who we got, a copy of this or whenever this came up. But anyway, so you'll be going back and you'll be identifying how this process would work.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I'm going to hold my vote to myself till I see how the process is going to work.
Just to be clear, Ben, just I got it correct. You've asked the staff to come back within three meetings to tell us how it might be done.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if they can, if they can figure it out beforehand, by all means, be happy to vote on it sooner. But a few other comments. So the, the properties that would be eligible would be all others beyond this 1,000 that are already identified, right? We already did a study in '01, '02. They only got older, so they're in the wheelhouse, right? So we don't need to redo these. So it's only those that aged into the 50-year time period or already fall within a historically designated area, presumably that would already be in the study. So I think we have over 1,000 properties that already are eligible. Now, if it's within the city of Camden limits, county can retain the right to revoke the approval, but the city of Camden already has a process and staff and such and such in place to accomplish it. As I understand it, that's where you could educate us more on the issues outside of that. I'm sure we can come up with an application process to provide folks tax relief. So to make it practical, if you had a property that just hypothetically was called a $100,000 property, and someone, to use Mr. Jones's example, puts in a couple hundred thousand dollars to improve it and make it into what's called a functioning business, and the overall value increases substantially. If the prior tax bill was, just call it $2,000, and because of their improvements and how much more attractive the business is, it'd be reassessed at maybe a $400,000 or $500,000 piece of property. They're going to save the difference over whatever period of time we would choose to approve. So say it's a $2,000 or $3,000 difference, over a period of time that makes a big difference. You know, if you call in 10 years, you're 30-some odd thousand a dollar. Now, could we do more? If state law allowed us to, we could consider it. But we've asked for research and been able to find this as an option to provide some tax relief to smaller businesses below having to provide a $2 million investment or a certain number of jobs. And so I think it makes sense for those reasons.
Other comments?
If I may.
Mr. Jones?
I'll yield to Mr., he hasn't said anything yet.
So do we have to do a study of the entire county or can we just take it on a case-by-case basis if we get an application? That's part of what the research would, is just how in-depth we would have to do. We would have to have something that identified a property as qualifying, just what that means, what we'll have to find out, is can we just, again, I don't know the exact detail of how much, but as Mr. Connel was saying, we've had 20 years since that survey was done, so there's probably hundreds more houses that have now qualified for it. We'd have to identify those. Well, say we enact it, we get no applications for the first 18 months. I mean, I don't see doing a whole lot of work on the front end if we don't have applications. And maybe we do, maybe we have four or five, but I think we could just take them case-by-case, just like a building permit or whatever and assess it and... From what I've been able to tell, most of the cities, all the cities that I've been able to tell and the counties that participate have some kind of an organ, either a historical commission or some kind of an entity that is the buffer between the county and the property owner. That's the entity that kind of manages that list. We don't really have a countywide entity like that, so we'd have to create one. It's my guess.
Let me interrupt there. I heard the word threshold, so we'll need some help on that from the staff. And then we would need to approve that threshold because that represents the standard at which these applications would be approved or not. The second thing is uniformly throughout South Carolina, there is a commission. There's one in Camden. If you go look at the Richland County example, there's one, there's more than one inside the Richland County Columbia District, and then there's a countywide one so that we up here wouldn't be bombarded with approvals. We use the yardstick of this threshold that we agree on the front end in our classic policymaking role, but we would have a commission that we would commission or appoint. And we would look, I think, Ben, to the staff to tell us how to do that too. Is that how you see it?
Mr. Chairman, I have no doubt and actually have every confidence that we would find a group of people who would volunteer for approvals of tax reductions or freezes for local properties.
Great. Other comments? Can I let Mr. Snodgrass go, Jimmy? Go ahead, David.
Just to, just to make sure we all understand, I think we all have a lot of questions, and I think the vote tonight is not whether or not we're going to do this, but the vote tonight is just to give staff some motivation to go answer, go find the answers to these questions. Because, I mean, I've had these questions for a while, but they're just, without an official vote of council, there hadn't been really a motivation to see, hey, can we do this or can we, can we not do this? So am I correct that tonight's vote is really just, we want to give staff the direction to go and explore this and come back with answers? So a vote tonight doesn't mean that you're for or against the Bailey Bill, it's just saying, hey, I need you to, I need you to give me some more answers. Would that be correct?
I mean, I'm happy to reread the motion. That's...
No, 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 you don't need to do that. You don't need to do that. I just want to, just so that everyone in the room understands.
That's the thrust.
Sir?
That's the thrust.
Correct.
Great. Other comments? Jimmy?
Well, here's what, I just don't know enough about it. I realize we're asking you to bring this to us, but wish we could have just, instead of doing a vote, I wish we could have just said, Dick, would you go bring some information back to us and we'll see what we're going to do from there.
Mr. Chairman?
That's kind of what we're doing, but I take both your points. Go ahead, Ben.
Well, I'm, Mr. Jones, the reason I put it up for a vote is I think one of the things we've tried to emphasize more recently is accountability, one amongst ourselves, but also among staff. So many times we've asked for a study to be produced or something happened and we didn't put a timeline on it, and then it just kind of falls through the cracks or something else pops up. So this way, within the next three meetings, we are directing staff or council to bring this information to us so that we can take action. And I'm just, I think it's important for us to be more deliberate that way.
Yeah, Jimmy?
Mr. Connel, I get it. You made perfectly good sense there. I understand what you're talking about. I will support this tonight only to get information, to have information brought back to us and a presentation given to us. I can't promise you I'll give my vote any further than that, but I do understand that was a good explanation. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Carpenter, I look forward to hearing you answer all my questions because I got a lot of questions on this.
Okay, I think we're ready to move to a vote. I think we've settled all the finer points, all those in favor of this study as pronounced by Mr. Connel.
One quick point, is it going to cost us any money for the study?
For this aspect, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous, Mary. Thanks for that discussion. Item number two is on page seven, up on the board as well at tab C, establish an ad hoc task force on growth. This doesn't require a vote, but we need to get it on the table and then I will read what I have. All those, can I have a motion to put this up for discussion?
Make a motion that we establish an ad hoc task force on growth.
Okay, second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner. Okay, I'll take it from here and then we'll have a discussion. First of all, I will read portions of the document, but it all impacts a very complex issue that has arisen over the last two or three years, especially with roads, now the growth with significant housing areas and so on and so forth. And with the request of the municipalities and the school district and several others, they've asked for a commission that we've, that I would appoint under my authority as the chairman. And as you know, ad hoc is Latin for a temporary committee to get the job done and back out and get on with the action. The purpose is sustain quality in schools and communities and county services. It's a comprehensive joint ad hoc committee to address population growth in Kershaw County for near and long-term action by respective bodies in the school board and the Kershaw County Council. It will start out by phase one to gather relevant resources and collect analyzed data from the census. That requires the collaboration of the school, of the county, and many other agencies to get it all together. The second phase will be appointed to report and recommend possible non-binding approaches to present it to the school board and separately to Kershaw County Council. It goes on to say, growth is both an opportunity and a challenge. We need more information to act or not to act in some cases. And the consensus has emerged to form a comprehensive review in the school board and county council and in the municipalities and together to capture what can be known, identify what is unknown, and then present unified, joined-up recommendations. The scope is to analyze trends, especially as impacting crowding in the roads, schools, services, fire, justice, police, detention, solid waste, sewer, planning and zoning, federal and state agency and legislative and COG frameworks impacting growth, funding, budgets, and revenues pictures. Pretty complex. Active members is determined by the co-chairs of the two boards, from the school superintendent and the county administrator in phase one. Phase one being fact gathering, data and analysis. That would be Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Robbins. And then they would, they in turn would refine the problem statement, which has not been done, build relevant data, which we don't have all of it yet, to include demographic assistance, which is not available to any of us right now, develop courses of action and the provision of quality schools, communities, and services, draft and present the non-binding report to the council with draft language and suggest, and this is an important point I got from my good friend Russell Brazel, there's some things we need to do right now. And a little later on, Mr. Tucker is going to bring forward a motion that is a do now. Suggest a do now and do later construct in your recommendations for immediate and for further review and action later. Emergent issues can be brought up impacting the current budget cycle will be welcome. Phase two is where elected officials from the school board and the county council would meet. And that would be two members from the school board with one co-chair and two members from the county council, and that would be one co-chair, representative from Elgin, Bethune and Camden, they've all agreed to do so, and other members as is necessary. And it is fully expected that that body comprised of elected members would bring in contractors, developers, trail riders, boaters, conservationists, fishermen, right, Ross, all sorts of farmers and hunters, and anyone who is an interest group to see and understand the growth and what it means for our county. The supporting staff would be designated by Mr. Carpenter and by the school superintendent. Nothing in this effort is to change that which the county has already directed to the administrator on 25 January to examine zoning, and we have already put that in motion. And we have already put that in motion with the administrator. Can I have that quick slide, Mr.? This is a chart that I briefed the council on during our retreat. The first item is the directive that we, the council unanimously voted on to improve planning and zoning services. The second one is a codification project, and meanwhile, understand and act, and not just understand on growth. To quantify and recommend, that would be Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Robbins. And then the ad hoc task force committee would then move out, along with advice from stakeholders and plank holders throughout the county. So with that, that's the action plan. I want to tell you that Mr. Conell has agreed to be the chairman. He did a great job on the fire study. And Russell and West Water Re will be the other member. So with that, comments, gentlemen? Mr. Jones?
Go ahead and get mine out of the way. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I made the motion that council be directed, that we direct the administrator to inquire as to and prepare for consideration an amendment to the Unified Code of Zoning Land Development Regulations and come back to county council with that. And we set a timeframe on that. In my motion, it says part of the meat of it was to meet at least quarterly with the Kershaw County School District as to planning and zoning matters, including industrial, commercial, and residential growth. You know, if you look at our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan is what drives this county. It's what directs us in what direction we're going to go. And the planning and zoning also, at this time, well, at least I was told this at the last meeting, that the zoning orders will include a new comprehensive plan. And of course, that's mandated by state law, and Michael Conley did indicate that. And it will also include, along with the comprehensive plan, but it also have the element of growth in there, which is something we talked about at the last council meeting, that talk about the roads and everything else. Let me see what it says here, Article three, under the planning commission, I mean, under the comprehensive plan. The local planning and the comprehensive plan process, it's got a whole bunch of stuff here, but the basic planning process of all planning elements must include, but not be limited to, inventory of existing conditions, statement of needs and goals, implementation strategies and frames. I mean, it goes, a population element considers historic trends and projections, household numbers. It just goes on and on and on. This is our comprehensive plan, which we're mandated to do by state law. I think creating this ad hoc committee is just bureaucracy. I just think it's just piling on something that we don't need. It has no, it has no meaning, has, you know, it's not enacted by state law as the comprehensive plan is. I just would like to ask this council to slow down, please. Let's let the administrator and the planning zoning commission do their job, and let's don't complicate it. And this will absolutely complicate it, and it's going to tie up staff. Why aren't we putting this kind of energy into the comprehensive plan? Why aren't we putting this kind of energy into the planning and zoning land use ordinance, which is so out of touch, so out of touch? That it's a miracle they can even do their job in planning and zoning. But what we've done, we've taken what I've done, what I brought to the table a couple of weeks ago, and I think what we've done is just absolutely create bureaucracy with not much thought in it. But that's my comments, Mr. Chair. I may have something else before we end this by vote.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Conell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman asked me to serve on this committee, and I thought it was interesting because if I can rewind back, and by the way, Mr. Jones, all your points are fairly legitimate. I mean, they're all very good points. I don't like government meetings. Who needs another government meeting? Or another agency or bureaucracy? But if I can rewind back to the fire ad hoc committee years ago, I think that was pretty effective. We needed it because we didn't have the data to make decisions. At the time, we were sending, you know, God bless every one of them fighting fires and responding to calls, but we were sending faxes with handwritten notes on them, and the faxes would go through, and we couldn't actually get accurate counts on what calls we had or didn't have. And therefore, we couldn't justify funding or expenditures on really anything. So between Mr. Jones, Mr. Gardner, and I, we were able to do the fire ad hoc committee that produced a lot of good data. I think we were able to actually update and modernize everything, get the technology where it needed to be so firemen and women could report more quickly and not have to focus on as much paperwork and get out and handle and serve calls. And of course, the data informed us that we needed to go to a full-time fire service, which we've done, which we pursued. So I actually look at this as fitting within the good motion that you had in your broad vision to inform the comprehensive plan in planning and zoning. I'm interested in getting data that will help us make good decisions. And if you remember, Mr. Jones, on fire and Mr. Gardner, when we were talking about fire, we didn't even know what we didn't know for some of it. And so that's why, that's why I think it'll be a useful exercise. A lot of these folks haven't gotten together in the same room and discussed their issues or concerns regarding growth, or really, I kind of look at it as the control of growth and how you grow intelligently and wisely. Now, some of the people who are going to be meeting in this room are going to have interests that are very much aligned. Some of them are going to have interests that are very much adverse. And that will be, that will be interesting to see what data comes from those discussions. But like fire, it'll come back to council, I imagine. I think that's the direction. And then we'll be able to make some decisions on what I hope will be some good data.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Gardner?
I think, excuse me. The big picture here is that this has a lot of working parts, a lot of parts that work together, and a lot of parts that work independently of each other, such as the school district. They work independent of us. We work here. Roads, roads work, we have virtually nothing to do with roads. So I think that what this ad hoc committee will do, will kind of pull those things in and take some of that data that we got at the other day at our workshop, as opposed to what the comprehensive plan, I think, Mr. Jones, your point well taken, but I think the comprehensive plan is groundwork. But I think, you know, what most people don't understand in the zoning issues, that people that are out there building those houses, that if that property's already zoned residential, it never gets to council. It's zoned residential. They can go build all the houses that is allowed by whatever zoning is there. So it doesn't come to council. So we don't know exactly how many are going to be built. So if we don't do something on our end to address some of that based on the information we got the other day, then, you know, they're going to build houses, and we're not going to have anything, any say on it because it's already zoned that way. So when they go to rezone, then it comes before us. So if they rezone it, and instead of building 100 houses, they want to build 300, then that comes to us for our rezoning vote. But if you take the properties that are in West Water Re is where we're talking about primarily, then we're talking about plans for 5,000 homes is what we looked at the other day, you know, not in the next couple of years, but in years down the road. If that property's already zoned that way, then we really don't have any way of stopping that. So we need to start planning accordingly now with the school district and what they're going to do with schools. And I think that's what this ad hoc committee will do. It will take the data that we have and that we get and put that together and apply it to whatever information we see and where we need to go based on what the school district, because if we get that many homes, we're going to be building at least one more high school, middle school, elementary, and maybe more. And again, that comes at a huge price tag. So I think it's important for us to start studying that now, to see where we're headed. But, you know, the real deal is, is we don't have a lot of control over zoning as they are zoned now. If they're zoned to build, they can build. Nothing we can do. You know, I mean, we can come up with moratoriums and all these other things, which I don't think are good ideas, but there are some things that we can do, but I don't know that there are good things that we can do for that. So I think it's important that we start gathering the data and look at the data we've got, and I think that's what this ad hoc committee will do.
Yeah, other comments? I'll get back to you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history lesson here. Same time that Chairman Burns formed the fire ad hoc, don't fall on the floor, Ben. Was the same time that we did the growth and SRO committee. And I was a part of that committee. I actually co-chaired it. We brought back, five of y'all sitting up here right now, the only two that wasn't, was Snodgrass and Russell Brazel. Good recommendations and wanted to do a impact fee study, but no one gave the administration the direction. We spoke about it, put it on the shelf, and nothing happened. Dennis Arlich and Al Bozart, myself, along with Todd McGonagall and others from the school board worked real hard on getting information. The best thing came out of that was we did get the SRO situation resolved and work through that. But what I'm saying, we could be further along had we just had an appetite from this body. And I hope this body does not sit on the information that this ad hoc committee brings back, like we have done the last four or five years. Because then we look for administration to work miracles. I'm going to support this tonight, but I'm not going to wait on just this to be the answer. I'm going to make some recommendations and some motions in the next order of new business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Terrific, Mr. Tucker, and thanks for your work on that study. Mr. Snodgrass?
Sure. I think, I think what we see here are two things coming together to work together. Mr. Jones, I supported your motion a few, a few weeks ago, and I think this is a good move as well because it's going to help inform one another. Because here's the thing, our issue is not a one-size-fits-all. You know, you may say, you may think, oh, this isn't complex. We just need to do, well, I mean, you just can't do without having some sort of plan and have some sort of understanding of what we need to do and see happen because it cannot be a one-size-fits-all. The issues that West Water Re is having is different from the type of issues that we are seeing in East Camden or even further out on that part of the county. And so we just can't say, we just can't make decisions based on what's going to stop or keep something from happening in West Water Re. We need to make decisions based on the good of the entire county. And I'm optimistic that this committee, along with what Mr. Jones proposed a while back of directing staff to do what they need to do, will help us understand that. I also see this as a move to help us be more efficient. I don't know about you guys, but there's nothing more frustrating than seeing government bodies not communicate. You know, you ever see someone out there fixing, paving a road, and then like two weeks later, someone's out there digging it up to put in new water lines? And it's like, did you guys not, can you not get together and realize, hey, don't pave that road yet, we're putting in new water lines? I mean, that is just the epitome of government inefficiency. And, and so I think this will help us curb that. And it's, I would also have a request that we ensure, and I don't know how we can do this because I know they don't work for us, but to make sure that someone from DOT is a part of this, and, and so that they are understanding what our growth needs are. I can't tell you how many times that we have meetings with DOT, and we try to tell them something, and then a year later, they come to us with this great epiphany of like, hey, did you guys know this? And we're like, yeah, we told you that two years ago. I still remember the time that Danny and I were in a meeting, and DOT said to us, did you guys know you have flooding issues in East Camden? We're like, welcome to the party. Like, we've just been trying to tell you that for the last, you know, 10 years. And so hopefully, that this, this team will, we can have someone from DOT because, I mean, that's part of our issue, right? We don't, some of the strain on the growth in West Water Re, and we're beginning to, and we see it in East Camden, is our road infrastructure. And the way that our system is set up, we don't have direct control over that. So they need to be at this table being informed of the strains that are on the infrastructure here in Kershaw County. So I see this all working together and helping us move forward to ensure that we know what we're doing and we're on the same page. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Mr. Jones, you want to bring it home?
Thank you so much. I'll do my best. State law says that all planning elements must be an expression of the planning commission recommendations to the appropriate government governing bodies with regard to the wise and efficient use of public funds, the future growth development, and redevelopment of its area of jurisdiction and consideration fiscal impact on property owners. The planning commission shall review the comprehensive plan and all its elements of it, and as often as necessary, but not less than once every five years to determine whether charges or changes, excuse me, it's a small print, in the amount, kind of direction of the development in that area. Here's, once again, everything you guys said, that what we proposed and what I brought to the table, will do that. What legal advice? What's the difference between the ad hoc committee and what I proposed at the last meeting?
I think, well, we understand that ad hoc committees can gather data.
Isn't that what the planning commission does?
In and itself will not do anything that's binding without further action in county council. And that would have to be through the comprehensive plan most probably.
So it would still have to go back through the comprehensive plan?
I said, well, one of the elements of the comprehensive plan is growth, but not all the elements. So this would be considered, this data would be considered when the zoning and comprehensive plan is done. The comprehensive plan is the roadmap, yes. And Mr. Conell says, that's correct.
The, the, excuse me, the planning commission has the authority to appoint ad hoc committees, maybe not ad hoc committees, but appoint advisory committees, do they not, the planning commission?
Well, I think when you do the comprehensive plan, you usually have a consultant do it, and I think you do get community input, yes. Consultant usually does that, though.
That's a lot of money. That sounds like a lot of money.
Oh, it's going to cost, yeah, redo the zoning can cost a significant amount of money.
But we have to do that by state law.
Well, you don't have to do it. Council voted to do it.
Got you. Well, I think it needs to be done because the planning, the land use ordinance we have now is just a total book of absolute confusion. I just feel like this is, I just don't agree with it. You know, I just feel like that we need to be putting our focus on the planning commission. We need to be putting our focus on the comprehensive plan, and that'll do everything that we're talking about doing here. I think what we've just done is just get a lot of politicians involved, and it's going to be very burdensome on our staff, very. Because they're going to have to do that, as well as they're going to have to go back and do the ad hoc committee, plus they're going to have to go back and do what we voted in two weeks ago. Are you capable of getting this done, Mr. Carpenter? With no extra money?
We will do our very best to get it done, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are people in the audience and people watching that want clarity, and they want clarity soon. And we were asked by the school board and its other municipalities to do this, and I quite heartily agree. If this, if this was easy, it would have already been done. Mr. Snodgrass has touched on the complexity of this thing, to include roads to which the comprehensive plan does not address because it's done by outside agencies, and we need to bring those people in and line them up. And I'm sure Mr. Conell's shown his excellent leadership, and Mr. Brazel his too, has no patience for going slow on this.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order because you said the comprehensive plan doesn't include roads.
Let me finish up, then you.
Okay, thank you.
But there is a clear focus here of what we need to do now and what we need to do later. Businessmen, landowners, farmers, people in Boykin, Charlotte Thompson, Antioch, Cassid are all impacted by this, and we need to give them clarity as soon as we can. I would like you to focus on the fact that we all have a different look at the elephant, and we think it's a camel. We're looking at it in different ways. The data needs to be clear and unmistakable and presented, and the right people to do that are the staff that are already engaged in that. And there are things that we at county can't do that the school board must do, and there are things here that can only be done in the reverse. So that's the reason we'll get this done. Mr. Jones, you said you had a comment?
Legal opinion, if I can. Comprehensive plan, when we talk about it leading our future, doesn't that include pretty much everything that drives our budget, whether it comes to parks, roads, housing, whether it's current or future?
One element of comprehensive plan is public infrastructure. That would include roads, sewer, water.
Because the chairman just said roads were not included in it, and I wanted to make sure we clarified that. I'm not trying to put you guys in a tough situation. I just want us to make sure we're being factual on what we're saying. But anyway.
Yeah, back to the point that Mr. Snodgrass made, the roads are not impacted here. We need to bring in outside agencies to get this right. And there are things in motion right now that we need to influence, and I think Mr. Conell can get a handle on it. With that... With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. It is item number three, directions to study impact fees.
Mr. Chairman.
And I turn to Mr.
We didn't vote? Call for the vote, sir.
There's no vote on this?
No? Okay, that's right.
Okay, we move to item number three, directions to study impact fees. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we direct the county administrator to investigate the possibility of imposing development impact fees in all or portions of Kershaw County pursuant to South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act SC Code 6-1-910.
Can we have a second? Second. Second for Mr. Gardner. It's on the table. Mr. Tucker, bring it in, please.
All right, I will start off. Some of these things we're, we're doing already, we're up on the board, we talked about them in our retreat, but I don't believe our existing citizens should pay for the tax burden associated with offsetting the impact fees of new development on public services and facilities. We're seeking rapid growth in the West Watery area and other areas of Kershaw County, and I believe it would be prudent policy to consider impact fees so that we can have growth, pay for growth, and provide some relief to the existing citizens of Kershaw County. I say that because we need to address growth and the costs of growth. Growth will come, whether we want it or not. We just need to provide for it and have growth pay for itself. Immediate things we can do to make growth pay for itself is what we're doing now is the impact study, and this is what council controls. Sewer impact fees, we already have a sewer impact fee. We can change the method of payment, pay when we reserve the capacity versus pay later. We used to have that here in Kershaw County, and we changed that, council changed that. But we used to pay for those impact fees when you withdraw them out of our checkbook. When you reserve them, you pay for them. We went away from that, and we started saying, when you go to actually make the connection, then you pay for that. Well, that can have a big company just reserve up everything, and, because there's no money that's attached to that. So, I can exert as much, reserve as much as I think I may need, not what I actually need and have to pay for. You can change that, that method. Look at the sewer impact fees and look at the amount charged. Update the fees. Mr. Carpenter, I think we're about to the end of that study, or that's coming soon on the impact fees for sewer?
On the rate study, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Release the RFP and planning and zoning for the ordinance. Comprehensive plan needs to be updated, as Mr. Jones has said. Look at all facets of planning and growth, needs and costs. Release this RFP study for the impact fees. Where to impose the parts of the county for these impact fees? I don't know how many of you are aware that Lancaster County just passed an impact fee, and it's not their entire county. They have a serious problem of growth in Indian land, and that's coming out of Charlotte. So, what they did, they did their study. So, when we do this study, I would like to look at all the county and then portions of the county. Because they just did Indian land, and what that did, that told them what the cost was for fire, EMS, schools, roads, police, I mean, the list just went on. And that study showed out of what they charged, this is the percent or the dollar amount that would go to these different entities to help offset the cost. Go look it up. It's, it's public knowledge. It's a good plan. I have buddies that sit on county council up there, and I have plenty of friends in Lancaster County. It's something that you might want to look to see how it's working for them, and it's in place. They hadn't been sued by it, so, and no one's up there, you know, protesting and carrying flags and so forth. So, I recommend that you take a look at that. We would do a capital improvement plan as part of the impact fee, the planning and zoning comprehensive plan, which is mandated by the state law, and the capital improvement plan, and the comprehensive plan will tie together. All of those need to tie together. And planning and zoning fees pay for, for its cost. If our fees are not where they need to be, then we need to make sure they are. My last thing is economic development. Spending money for new jobs, this is what this council has done in county, and recruiting new businesses and new jobs. We need to provide an orderly process for growth and need to accommodate the workers for the new jobs we're creating. We want people to work and live in our county, and that's what we've done. You know, the old thing, you know, you, you ask for one thing, and industry is great because it releases on our taxes because they pay more taxes than any of us in this room, but comes with that is people. You know, you, you're going to have people commute from Columbia, from Charlotte, and tell them, okay, you're not welcome to live here. I don't think that's the sign that we want to send as citizens and residents of Kershaw County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, other comments?
Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Gardner.
I'm, I'm not a huge fan of impact fees, but I think it's one of those things that, given the direction that we're going and the growth that we're having, it's one of those things that may solve some of our problems. I think impact fees tend to hurt the small developer, the small contractor, but I think it also helps you out in some of your infrastructure from some of those fees. So, I certainly am in favor of a, a study to look at them, and I think it would, would help us perhaps, those people who are calling for some immediate results, this is an, an immediate thing that we can put out there pretty quickly, or maybe not pretty quickly, but quicker than most things, and it may solve some of our problems early on. So, I look forward to a study on this. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass or?
Uh, Mr. Carpenter, couple of questions. So, why do we have to do a study? Why can't we just vote up and down whether or not we want to do the impact fees?
Mr. Snodgrass, the General Assembly, some years back, put fairly significant limits on the ability of local governments to assess impact fees. They limited who can assess an impact fee. They limited what you can assess an impact fee for. They limited the amount of time you're allowed to collect the fee and not spend the fee, and they said, created a set of criteria that you had to follow before you could even impose a fee. One of the first aspects of that legislation was a requirement that a study be done that would determine the actual need. It would take into account a variety of other conditions as well, a long-term growth rate, the impact on the housing stock, impact on roads and schools, et cetera. So, there's a, a fairly significant criteria list that have to be addressed as part of that study that would then determine whether a fee was warranted even by law, and if it was warranted, then, then what the need was.
So, are, are you saying that we could do a study and it may, by state law, it may not warrant that we can impose this fee? Is that what, did I hear that correctly?
As I understand it, that, that is possible, yes, sir.
And I ask that because I don't want, I don't want us to feel like that we're just a study-happy council because every, so far tonight, all the studies that we've had to engage in are, many of them are the state, the state government in its infinite, infinite wisdom has, you know, put in places, has put in place some, some very tangled webs that you have to navigate to, to get through. And so, I want to make sure that we're all on the same, the same page on that. So, I appreciate that. You know, I, I think this isn't going to, I don't think this is going to stop growth. Let's say we would, we would, we would incur this. I don't think it would stop growth. I think it would give us a mechanism in which we can invest, reinvest into the infrastructure that these, these homes or these, that these homes are going to make on our, on our county. Because I think, I think the growth is coming no matter what. I, I know some people are, they don't want that, but in, in many ways, I, I think it's coming no matter whether we want it or not. It's just the nature of the growth that, that we're currently in. It's the nature of how the state is, is growing. And I think what we need to do is make sure that we get out ahead of it and make sure that we plan accordingly. You know, everyone says, I don't want to be Lexington County. I don't want to be Lexington County either. I'm, I moved from there. I, that's, that's not what I want to be about either. But I think a part of it is doing some of these things to get out ahead of these things. You know, the, the old proverb that says, you know, the best time to plant a tree was a thousand years ago, the second best time is now. And so, I think at some point, we got to quit kicking the can down the road and get a hold of these things. And I'm not saying I'm for against impact fees at this, at this moment, but I think it's worth studying and understanding our options because we've got to, we've got to provide for the infrastructure one way or the other. So, thank you, Mr. Tucker, for helping us stop kicking the can.
You're welcome.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Tucker?
Oh, you, you, Mr. Jones?
Nope. I'll go after you, sir.
I just want to address what Mr. Gardner said about the small businesses. That's the reason why the impact fees need, study needs to go along with our comprehensive plan, because there are guidelines in there. Mr. Michael Conley, if I'm correct, I think it's 10 homes or more creates a subdivision? Is, is that correct? So, we can set those guidelines where we cannot hurt the small business folks that's, that's doing one and two and three and four, five homes. If you're doing 10 or more, you're no longer considered a small business even right now by a comprehensive plan. So, you know, and there's other guidelines and things we can tweak once we get the information back. I think council's going to have a lot more latitude than they think, but we've got to get a, what I call a, a guideline or some type of reference point so we can move within our legal rights to formulate what works best for Kershaw County.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Go ahead, David.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Jones. Just a quick question or a point of clarification. Yeah, so in our, in our code, I believe I'm correcting this, Mr. Conley, that we determine a subdivision as 10 or more. Have I, have I heard that correct, or a major subdivision?
Major subdivision.
A major subdivision. So, I think there's already, as far as whether or not we hurt the little, the, the small builder, I think there's already mechanisms in place in which we can study this without a guarantee of hurting the small home builder or the family that wants to build a home on family land. You know, at this point, I see the nature of this study is going after the larger builders that are trying to, you know, build 10, 20, 30, 40-plus homes at a time. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Everything that we've talked about tonight when it comes to impact fees, ad hoc committee, the motion I made and the work I put into everything two weeks, two weeks ago would, would have resolved that. It would have brought it back to us, but we haven't even given, he hadn't even got his feet in the bathtub, and we already have put an ad hoc committee on top of it and an impact fee on top of it. And, but everything that I mentioned about the revamping of the planning and zoning, land use ordinance, and the comprehensive plan would take care of everything we've talked about up here. It's as simple as that. That's, that's just a fact. You know, we talk about impact fee not hurting the big, it hurts, hurts the little man, but doesn't hurt the big man. And then we talk about the state, you know, passing a lot down to us. We've created more bureaucracy for ourselves in the last two years than the state has ever created for us, and they've created a lot for us from time to time with act created in the local, by not addressing that and also the local government fund by taking it away from us. Folks, we just have a different of opinion here. I think an impact fee will not help us in any form where, where we're trying to go. I think the impact fee is going to be put on the properties, and the homeowners, the citizens are going to end up paying that impact fee. So, I, I just fail to see where that's the answer to what we're trying to find here. I, I made an outstanding proposal a couple of weeks ago. As I said, our feet hadn't even got wet on it, and we're bringing back all these other things that I think is nothing but a bunch of bureaucracy. And what I want, and you know, we've got some tough times ahead of us. We've got some fees, you know, the class action lawsuits with fees going on in this state, and we've created new fees. And, you know, I just think, I just think this is going in the wrong direction right now. I would have liked for this council to just sit back and what we voted on two weeks ago, give that the opportunity because there was some immediate concerns in there, and then there were some long-range concerns in there. You know, we knew three to four months. We, we talked about that on my proposal for the administrator to get more involved. Also, we talked about certainly two years to do the land use ordinance and the comprehensive plan because you got to give it time. But we, we haven't given it time. We, we, we're just throwing more stuff on top of staff that they're going to have to go out and spend more money. How much is the impact fee study going to cost us?
We don't know, sir.
Give me a ball, a guesstimate.
Honestly, I don't know.
Sixty thousand?
It could be. I really don't know how much it.
Do you have any, in the past, Mr. DeBose, you've been here all your life?
I don't know how much it'll cost, but it won't be insignificant. The amount will not be insignificant.
Right.
And neither, neither will the zoning study. It will not be insignificant either.
Correct, correct. But anyway, I, I felt like that my proposal was a solid one, and, you know, we talk about how much money we put into economic development. Yeah, we did a 17.12 million dollar bond. It will be a $30 million payback over 30 years. And this council, I said, let's stop, slow down, quit spending the money. I made a proposal that would have been a very solid, solid position for us in economic development. And, you know, I think we talked at the, I don't know if it was the retreat at other county councils, we talked about industrial jobs, real jobs that we've gotten in Kershaw County. It's maybe 40 to 50. I, I know we've gotten precious farms in here, but you know, they wanted to come here. Wasn't so much from our, our efforts or our huge, huge investment we put. First off, I always give an alternative plan to spending money. Always give a plan to, to utilize monies within, to not have to go back to the citizen to take more money out of their pocketbook. And I did that on, on that issue. And I bring it up because it was brought up as a point of, of issue tonight when we talk about economic development. But my plan would have worked, and basically, we started doing what I suggested anyway, I think, way back on the 17.12 million dollar, 17.12 million dollar bond that we issued. Am I right, Mr. Carpenter? Kind of slowed down with it. We're trying to.
Well, I mean, yes.
Where we, where we.
We slowed down because we sold it all because we were successful.
But what I'm saying is that we got rid of it, did we not?
Oh, the bond, yes, we, yes, we defied the bond.
And who, who was saying that all along, right here? Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. I've really enjoyed tonight. I just don't agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I call the question. Oh, Mr. Connel, go ahead.
This is a more of a legal question for Mr. DeBose. So, I think I heard earlier that a subset, a geographic subset of a county was applying an impact fee. Are there any equal protection issues that come up with that? So, say you have two properties that are exactly the same. One of them's within the, the smaller area in the county, and one of them's not. Are you allowed to treat them differently unless you set up like a special purpose district or something like that?
The impact fees, you can target the area that is experiencing the growth. That's why you have to get a consultant and do what they call a capital improvement plan, which looks at the entire county and quantitates why you're going to do it, where you're going to do it, for what and for how much. But yes, counties do not, they do enact impact fees that are not over the entire county.
And so, it's state statute that lets you get around the equal protection issue or what?
Well, the equal protection issue more comes in to how you assess the impact fee within the area. That is a very significant issue within the area you assess the fee.
Okay, one more hypothetical, and I'm sorry lawyers live in hypotheticals, but, so, if it was, are we able to apply something like the Bailey Bill to just a portion of the county, or that has to be applied all throughout due to?
I think the neighborhood legislation calls it to be throughout the county. Now, you can delegate in the Bailey Bill the administration to political subdivisions. So, for instance, you could delegate to the city of Camden, things in the city of Camden. Yes, you can do that. You can delegate to other organizations, as was alluded to previously by Mr. Carpenter in the Bailey Bill.
Okay.
But it, but it needs to be enacted countywide.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I digress, guys. I'll, I'll settle the rest of the legal, getting the legal weeds over lunch with Mr. DeBose.
Gets lawyers excited. I call the question. With that, and Mr. Brazel absent, let's move to vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Connel, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass, those opposed, as Mr. Jones, and it passes. We move to the next item, which is old business, a boat ramp update. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you recall, the council directed the staff to ensure the removal of the floating boat ramp at the Patriots Landing.
to ensure the removal of the floating boat ramp at the Patriots Landing. Um, that contract has been awarded. It will be removed, uh, the weekend, March 9th through 11th, those three days, it'll be taken out of the river and, uh, we will store the ramp for future use. Uh, we'll also be meeting, uh, the other part of the guidance from the council was to begin the process of, of, um, determining what could be done with that location, how it could be enhanced, improved, and even expanded. Uh, we will start meeting with engineers on the 1st of March on that process. That'll probably take, um, into the summer as we would look to get community input and council input into, uh, what they would like to see at, at a boat landing. So, we would anticipate that, uh, that would, um, start in, uh, the 1st of March and it would end sometime probably in August with a report, uh, delivered to the council for council's consideration.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Uh, yeah, Ben?
Are the pylons going to be significantly damaged and removed and we can't save those or do we know?
No. The pilings will be cut off as close to ground level as we can get it.
Okay.
But they will be removed.
But the ramp will save somewhere?
Yes, sir. We'll save the ramp. Yes, sir.
Great. All right, and I'll update Russell.
Excuse me, I mean the floating dock. Floating dock, yeah.
There you go. Uh, I'll be touching base with Russell on this one. Uh, with that, that ends, uh, business. We move to council briefings, uh, starting with Mr. Tucker.
Uh, no report, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Gardner?
Uh, just one announcement that, uh, I've served here for in my 12th year and it will be my last. I will not be seeking reelection this year.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Conell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it was mentioned earlier, but all of the wrestlers throughout Kershaw County are going in, into championship competition.
Yep.
Uh, this upcoming weekend and afterwards. So, let's pray for them to be injury-free and successful according to the effort that they put in. And, uh, two other things I want to mention. At our budget meetings we've had this past week and before, it's costing us about $200,000, at least. That was the number I heard in our meetings. It's costing us about $200,000 a year because people from outside of the county are coming in and dumping their solid waste at our recycling centers and solid waste facilities. So, we've got to do something about that. At some point in the future, expect a motion, and we already talked about it, either to do a, a test run at one location on like a license place reader or maybe, uh, code enforcement being able to show up a little bit more, but we're carrying all these additional loads of other people's garbage and, um, and it's costing us significant money. In addition, I've received numerous calls lately about, uh, litter on our public roads. I don't know if we need to increase the fine, add community service to it or something, but it's going to happen. Uh, Mr. Templer just gave me an update today that they pulled another 14 or 15 bags of trash off of White Pond Road, which, uh, really should just be a beautiful and well-kept area. We actually just cleaned it up, I think, recently with the, um, with the Clean Community Commission, and they organize usually two or so cleanups per year throughout the county. And I think we got like 340 or 350 bags of trash, uh, at one of our last cleanups. So, I think we have to do something about it. We got to do something with some teeth, whether it's part-time, uh, code enforcement to, to make sure the laws we actually have are enforced, or we got to, uh, address the issue with solid waste also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Yes, uh, two, couple of quick things here. One, on these recycling centers, we used to check their driver's license if they are resident of Kershaw County, you know? They can dump it. They're not, they can't. Um, I want to thank the parents that came here tonight with the recreation issue. They were brave. They got up here, they spoke their mind. They were uncomfortable. Many of them haven't done that before, but, uh, you don't mess with a mom. I'm very disappointed, very disappointed in the way our rec department handled that. It was an absolute debacle and, and I'm going to tell you something, we need to focus on our leagues. We need, we need some, some enthusiasm with the leagues like we did when, uh, on the River Park. Uh, with somebody like Gunnar Cato in charge of the leagues, I think he would really turn it around. You'd see, uh, some good things happening. But I'm very disappointed and I hope, I hope, and I will stay on top of it, that we're going to give, in, in a contract, we're going to say what we're responsible for and what they're responsible for, and we're going to absolutely give him more than one season when he doesn't have just a few days to get ready for that season. And when, when this other, and it's not about this other company, it could have been anybody. It wasn't their fault. They were, they were sought after by us from Columbia and, and they're fine folks. I have nothing against them, but bottom line is, it was handled totally wrong and that concerns me. And now, especially about baseball, softball, soccer, all the above. So, uh, Mr. Carpenter, I hope that you will look at that, taste some, give us some deep thought on where we need to go with recreation, how it needs to be handled, because this can't continue to go on. We can't do business like this when the commissioners know nothing about it and nobody else knows anything about. And I'm not going to ask who made the decision. That's not important. The important thing is that you jumped on it, you got involved in it, but I, I want you to jump back in it and give this man a fair chance. And, and what we've got in that contract is not giving him a fair chance. And he's been here many, many years. You know, a lot of coaches have six months to, to 10 months to organize and get ready and get their leagues ready. We're giving him 10 days, uh, whatever it is. But anyway, enough on that. I went to a group meeting this morning or earlier today or mid-afternoon and a couple of people came up to me and said, Jimmy, would you please say something about East Camden? We feel like we've been left behind. So, I would like to make sure, and I know this is no punt to Mr. Snodgrass. He has fault. He has talked about East Camden, but they have fallen behind. We need to, we need to just in our planning phase, we're going to, now that y'all got the ad hoc committee and we got the comprehensive plan going, please, please, let's make sure we're thinking about the whole county and East. And I know that's what y'all want, but that's not what always happens. And I got a couple of things to, Mr. Gardner. Gosh, 12 years, time flies when you're having fun. Uh, I wish you the best, but we still got a few months to do with each other, but, uh, we've, we've, we've agreed on very little, very little, but it's, it was never personal with me and it won't be the next 10 months. And, uh, but I will stand my ground and state my facts and, and be who I am and, and I just have sometimes, sometimes, not all the time, differences of opinion. And, and I have one other thing I want to say too. One, he announced he's not running. I, I am running. I think I announced a year ago, two years ago, I am running again and, uh, look forward to it. But I want to bring something that came to my attention today, just make, make, mention on one of my colleagues here on county council. He and I don't agree on a lot either, but I have a lot of respect for him. Ben Conell is a good man. Now, I don't agree with his politics. He's a, he's a, he's a, he's not a Republican or Democrat. He's a Christian man. He's, his family is a solid family in our community and to have any personal jabs at him or his family insults me as well. That, that, that does mean I'm going to vote with him or agree with him. You know, sometimes we do, but I just felt like it was important for me to say that. You know, I run on my merits, not my good looks, because if I ran on that, I probably wouldn't have won. But, um, and I think that's exactly what everybody should do, is just run on your, your merits and credentials. I'm going to continue to fight what I think is right. I'm not going to, I'm not going to bow down. I'm not going to buckle under if I think I have a better idea, I'm going to bring it to the table. And that's what I do. So, anyway, thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of county council, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Snodgrass?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, just, just a couple of brief, uh, notes, uh, on the, on the recreation issue. Uh, Mr. Jones, I echo, um, some of the concerns that you have. And I know, um, just kind of going back to the timeline, I was in contact with Vic Carpenter for, as early as February 3rd, uh, when that announcement came out. And, uh, this is probably a good lesson for us as, there's a balance here of policymakers and being, managing operations. And that, that's what we, that's kind of this, this balance act that we have. We set policy, uh, Mr. Carpenter, his staff, implement that. And, and of course, we are the elected body, so there are times where we have to, uh, call things into, into question to make sure there's, there's accountability. Um, this, this whole thing has really been unfortunate because I think unfortunately we've gotten ourselves probably in the middle of a, of a philosophical battle. Um, I, I've been around the soccer world a while and I know that everyone feels like their philosophy is the best. I'm like, oh, we, we teach holistic soccer. No, we develop, we develop the holistic player. And I'm not, I'm not jabbing at either one. I'm just saying, I'm just kind of stating where I feel like we've maybe have placed ourselves, uh, because you have two groups who are saying, oh, no, we're the, we're the better one. And I want to go on record in saying for me, it came down to realizing that we didn't follow our process. It came down to realizing that, uh, we consulted our commission, um, at one point and then at the, another point, uh, we didn't. And, and really it brought to light for me the importance of, uh, council members staying on top of our commissions and, and making sure that those who were on our commission, um, when we, when there's someone rolls off or when there's an expired term, uh, that we keep those up to date because those are, those are our eyes and ears, uh, out into the community. And, and I do think this was an issue that should have came back before the commission. Uh, but Mr. Carpenter, just thank you so much for, uh, walking with us through that. I, I know it wasn't easy, um, and, and I know that, again, there are times where we have to remember that we are the policymakers and, and we, we need to recognize that staff does have a, a great deal of, of variance to be able to make a decision based on what they feel like is, uh, best for, for their program. But at the same time, I think in this situation, um, we didn't, we didn't follow, um, our process. And, uh, uh, hopefully, the TSE, they, they've, they've been aware of the, of the, of the change and I'm hoping, I am rooting for them so, so much to, to go, to go after it. Uh, I'm thankful, uh, that we were able to, to go in the direction that, that it went in, but I'm also, I'm, I'm rooting for them. But, uh, that concludes my remarks and, uh, thank you.
I'll close it out. And I want to say thank you to the parents and other people who were there to support what they thought was the right thing on the soccer issue. But I want to back it out a little bit and, and also remind us all up at this table that there's a sense of humility, that, uh, we ain't perfect either. And when something goes wrong, and it did, then we learn from it and quit kicking the, the man down unnecessarily. The process is in back where it needs to be and we should thank the people who stepped up and said, I made a mistake and I'm going to fix it. And, uh, I have stronger words for the people that continue to kick it down the road. We're going to fix this and we, we own the problem and we should thank Vic and Shane for stepping up and our recreation committee for doing that.